...arrives, like to call to order this study session of District 116 for Tuesday, September 4th, 2018. Roll call, please.
Member Carter.
Here.
Member Hall.
Here.
Member Patton.
Here.
Member Kloski.
Here.
Member Fisher is here and President Demmett.
Here. We have a quorum present and we're expecting Benita just any minute. There she comes right now.
She's waiting for us.
So let the roll call show that Benita has arrived. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to this evening's agenda?
No, there are none.
Any citizen statements this evening? Anyone wish to address the board? Seeing none, I'd like to take advantage of this opportunity to recognize Molly Sweeney, a junior at UHS, for running the cameras for us tonight. Thanks, Molly.
Thank you, Molly.
Anyone wish to address the board? Last call. Seeing none, we need a motion. There'll be no executive session this evening. We need a motion to approve the agenda. Still moved?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same say aye. Motion is carried. We have some administrative briefings, reports, and commendations this evening, so master board member recognition.
Yeah, so I just want to bring to the attention of the viewing public that I received the following commendations and recognitions of several of our board members. The following board members received a status of master board member level one, Ms. Benita Rollins-Gabe, Ms. Ruth Ann Fisher, and Ms. Anne Hall. And then Board Member Brenda Carter received the master board member maintained status. And congratulations and thank you for your service. That that status actually comes through professional development and attendance at a variety of the...
State Board of Education.
The State Board, not the State Board of Education, the Illinois Association of School Board, regional meetings. And that will be recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards during the upcoming ALINI Division Meeting, which is on September 27th, 2018. Is it the 25th, Lori, or the 27th?
It's on a Tuesday. It's a what?
Thursday, she's saying.
25th Tuesday is the consensus up here. We'll double check before the end of the meeting.
All right. Congratulations, everyone. Next, we'll do move to the six-day enrollment report. Dr. Bynum.
Good evening, everyone. All right, in front of you, you have the six-day enrollment, just looking at a comparison over the last 11 years. And based off of just enrollment from last year, if we look at our K-5 subtotals, overall we have 41 fewer students at the K-5 level. We still saw an increase at Dr. Williams and an increase at Yankee Ridge. And looking at UMS and UHS, we had about a total of 90 students overall at the secondary level and an overall increase of about 49.
Any questions for Dr. Bynum?
Are any of these enrollment levels approaching areas of concern? I'm specific looking at Dr. Williams, you know, which is, you know, upwards of 450 again.
Our goal was to try and really push a soft cap at Dr. Williams, but the residents and that move, that the population continues to increase. So even though we might provide options to other families to attend Yankee Ridge or Thomas Paine or King or Wiley, we even extended the petition granting process even longer this year to try and alleviate some of that additional stress from Dr. Williams. And this is, this is still where we're at. And so that's after moving, I would say, still moving 60 or more students.
So is there a soft cap? I mean, in your...
Yes, there's a soft cap of one, or of 450.
Oh, okay, so I thought...
Initially, we were trying to get at 4, 425, 430, but it was, there was no way to do that. And make sure it is that we could stay within reasonable constraints because as other families opt or petition to move, often it is that they're providing transportation. And so unless it is that we're going full scale to provide transportation for any families that are interested in going to King or Wiley, this is what we could do with the constraints or limitations that we had. One of the things that I would say is that you'll see as we run our attendance report in October that across the K-5 buildings, classroom sizes are, I would say, historical lows in terms of how it is that we were able to be very thoughtful about the structuring of Dr. King after it is that we transitioned a French dual-language program to Yankee Ridge. The strands that have been added to Yankee Ridge, classroom sizes are, I would say, as I've gone back three or four years, there haven't been classroom sizes across the district that look to be as low as they are currently. And I would say in the process of trying to understand what impact the soft cap might have, understanding that after Labor Day, we're going to get more students that are still coming in and enrolling late, really trying to be thoughtful about how it is that we can ensure that we provide the best learning environment for students. And so this is very much, I would say, a balancing act each year because of, you know, how things are already conditioned or structured. So we're just really trying to be as agile and flexible as possible. And, you know, one of the things this year that we haven't done in previous years is if we see that there could be a potential for any type of movement, you know, we tell teacher, you know, our goal was to inform teachers well ahead of time. Like, we didn't want to wait till two weeks in the school and say, hey, we only have a classroom that has nine or 10 students in it. We said, hey, if it is that, you know, our projected enrollment doesn't increase, this may be some alternative options that we have to consider because, you know, we have to be mindful of ensuring that we're responsive to all of our school buildings.
Well, thank you for explaining that.
I just had a quick question. At Dr. Williams, do you happen to know about how many are into the dual-language program we have there?
I didn't disaggregate based on programming, but I can pull that information together for you.
Okay, that would be great if you could have that at the next meeting.
Yeah, and I can do that for Lille as well if you're interested.
Okay, thank you.
I got a question. So on this count, does it include the kids that are transferred, like, from Courage Connections, the homeless count? Are they still being placed in their regular schools? Are you able to balance it?
Any students, any students that are attending or this is their home school, like, they're counted in our attendance. So if they're homeless, they came from, you know, or were referred from another program, if they're our student, they're our student, they're going to be reflected in our attendance or our enrollment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. 7.3 Yankee Ridge Gymnasium Naming Committee Recommendation.
So, Dr. Anderson, just going to give a quick report and a recommendation. Good evening, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here. I recently met with a nine-member naming committee on August 27th to review a proposal that was sent to the Board of Education and Dr. Owen to name the Yankee Ridge Gymnasium after Nancy Thies Marshall. In reviewing her accomplishments, I learned that as a child, Nancy attended Yankee Ridge along with her four siblings. She is an accomplished gymnast. She performed on the U of I gymnastics team, helped win nine Big Ten titles, seven regional titles, and earned All-American status on the uneven bars. She was named Big Ten Gymnast of the Year in 1976 and 1977. Prior to her accomplishments at the collegiate level, she was on the U.S. Olympic team and she competed in the 1972 Munich Olympics. After her competitive career, she began advocating for the values of athletics for women, and she served as a commentator for the NBC News, or NBC Sports, excuse me, and served for 12 years on the U.S. Gymnastics Board. The committee reviewed her accomplishments, the associated Board of Education policy, and the community feedback, which included 41 community members expressing their support for this proposal. And at the end of the meeting, the naming committee unanimously agreed on a recommendation to name the Yankee Ridge Gymnasium after Nancy Thies Marshall. As you consider this proposal, I'll remind you that on Saturday, September 22nd, we have our Yankee Ridge Community Open House from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. And if you decide to move forward with naming it after Ms. Thies Marshall, that might be the perfect event to have a commencement ceremony or a recognition ceremony, excuse me. Thank you.
Any questions for Brian? Okay, this will be on our agenda at a later moment for action. So time now for any discussion or questions. Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian.
Our last adminis-- and Lori's reminded me that we're not live on TV until the city council has finished a meeting tonight because they would normally have met yesterday, but because of the holidays. So I'm sure we'll be shown in its entirety at later times. Dr. Martin with King School Improvement Plan.
So Christina Kail Lewandowski, principal of Dr. King, and I believe a number of members of your school improvement team are here to present your school improvement goals and Push it one more time. There you go. And wait. Nope.
Push hard.
There you go.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Christina Kail Lewandowski, principal at King School. And I'd like to introduce my wonderful team here. Oyada Haney, sitting on the left, she is our student-parent-community engagement coordinator. We have Noel Hatcher here, our third-grade teacher. And to my right, we have Lorena Griffin, fourth-grade teacher. And to the furthest to the right, we have Sarah Tavis, our art teacher. So again, thank you so much for having us, and we are excited to be here. We are the Monarchs, the King Monarchs, and our vision here at King School is to create changemakers, design thinkers, and future leaders. So speaking of future leaders, we have a picture here. So this was a picture during our first day assembly, and so we want our students to be future leaders like our great leader, Dr. Owen, who was, happened to be at our first day assembly. We have more future leaders there and request, okay, so, oh, I guess we can't play the little video. Sorry about that. But it was just a video to exhibit our culture at King School. And so we have school improvement goals. Goal number one is students in subgroups will improve their reading fluency. We're aiming for 57% to 65% that all students in defined subgroups will read at or above level. We are concentrating on instruction, and this is an example here of a teacher giving specific feedback using Google Classroom. We know that when you provide students with effective feedback, that's the number-one way to improve student achievement. Here, we have a picture of instructional outcomes. Again, another way to improve student achievement is to have the teacher communicate specifically with their students exactly what they are expecting them to learn. And over here, we have a picture of, this is Ms. Brown, our fourth-grade teacher. She is doing what we call guided reading. Guided reading is when you have a small group and teachers go over specific strategies such as summarizing, predicting, so forth. Okay, we have a new picture here, so we are concentrating on learning. Here's an example. Imagine being in a, in a classroom and you have so many things to look at, such as your neighbor. Just someone as close as you, as another student sitting by you, can be very distracted. So as a student, when teachers have what we call a focus wall, they are able to look at exactly what they need to focus on. So these are examples of, of standards of goals for language arts, math, social studies, and science. We also, to the far right here, have what we call anchor charts. Anchor charts are very important also to be displayed in a classroom because it helps focus the, the student in specifically what the teacher expects for them to do. Here, we have an example of a writing rubric. We use Lucy Cockens, and what that exhibits is every teach, every student has their own little container full of information that they're supposed to have so that they can improve their learning. This is an example of a rubric where students use, after they write, they then check to see if they are on track with what is expected of the teacher. And last, we have an example of another anchor chart with story elements. And to continue, all our teachers have in mind culturally relevant teaching. They're constantly monitoring students and providing them feedback, and these are just some other examples. At King School, we are concentrating on building a collaborative culture, focusing on learning, and focusing on results. So just an example, we have here, I had this wonderful furniture in a box, and my secretaries just took it upon themselves to, oh, we're going to put this together. You know, I didn't ask them to do that. This is just, they're just wonderful. Here, example of preschool students getting ready to go to lunch. And this was on the first day. Look how beautiful that line is. That was wonderful. Here's an example of where we engage our community. This is Mr. Brian Shutey. He is, works at Parkland. So we involved him to talk to our students about college. Here, we have an example of how we use our technology. This is Ms. Puffer, a first-grade teacher, using the Permittian Board to enhance the curriculum. Here's an example of what our social worker did, again, building that collaborative culture. She built this tree with all of the teachers' names and something about them that the students wrote on there, and this was during Teacher Appreciation Month, which was in May. And then last example here, we have Mrs. Tavis with a parent and her daughter during our Fine Arts Night, which was the first time we did that last spring, which was wonderful, and I cannot wait for the next one. We have a lot of students that are international, so we incorporate culture as well, for example, Chinese New Year and UN Day, United Nations Day. We're always celebrating students' successes and we love to see them perform. Next, we're going to have Ms. Hatcher talk about our second goal.
Good evening. Our second goal really focuses on social and emotional learning for our students, and that goal is to create a behavior system that represents all racial groups equitably, resulting in an increase in student engagement. So what we have listed on this slide here are many of the tools that we're using at King School to develop our students' social and emotional skills, to build community in the classroom, and to build relationships both between teachers and students and students and one another. So one of those is the Second Step Curriculum. The Second Step Curriculum is something that we have K through 5. All the classrooms have something that's developmentally appropriate for students at that, that age level to help them recognize their own emotions, recognize emotions in other students, and ultimately navigate conflict. It's very well tailored to each age group. There are examples, I know the older grades, I teach third grade and I've taught fifth grade, there's a video clip that starts with a very realistic scenario of things that happen in the school, conflict over the line at a water fountain, or, you know, group work problems, like somebody's not doing what they're supposed to in a group. And you work through with the students a lesson about how to handle situations like that, what could have gone differently, how is each person feeling, you know, because recognizing their own feelings and how that shapes your behavior is really an important part of social and emotional development. So we've got the Second Step Curriculum. We have morning meetings in our classrooms, a chance to build community every day. Some are in the mornings, some are before or after lunch, some at the end of the day, whatever works for the particular schedule. Also circles. Circles be, circles that are restorative, restorative practices after a conflict, but also circles that are lower-tier, like a morning meeting or a space and a format to have conversation and to build relationships. And so that when a conflict arises, there's already a system in place in the classroom to discuss what happened, how everyone was impacted, and to resolve situations. And finally, PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention System. Oh, so we did a walkthrough of the whole school, something we do every year with stations all around the building. What are the expectations in the hallway? What are the expectations in the bathroom? Because we feel like you have to be extremely clear with kids, exactly what's expected, because if they don't know what we expect, it's really not fair to hold them accountable for that. And that's something I tell my students in my classroom all the time. If you don't know my particular expectations, that's really, that wouldn't be fair. So we have to spend a lot of time going over that. So our system this year is a little change. Before, we did stars, and we did a star drawing once a week at King. But we've switched this year for recognizing students who are respectful, responsible, and ready to a system of monarch mura. Rather than a drawing, every child receives this mura and then they get to cash that in at a prize cart. So this really rewards each individual student. The drawing, it was great, but we needed a change. And, and they get to really see a direct result of their positive behavior rather than just a chance to win. It's encouraging them to keep track of their money, to count their money, to save, to make plans for the things that they'll purchase off the prize cart. I know when the prize cart came to Miami, we were talking about, if you want this prize, think how much would you have to earn each day to get to that in a week or two weeks? So it gives us a chance to talk about math in a way that's very relevant to them. And then these are some examples. So the prize cart comes right to the classroom. Teachers were able to sign up for a time that works well with their schedule. There are two carts so that the things on the cart are appropriate for the age range of the students coming in, a letter at home to parents, letting them have input about things their child could or couldn't buy from the cart. And so far, it's been really successful. The kids are very excited. They're excited, what do I need to do to earn it? What, what are the positive things? Maybe very aware of what their choices might be that would earn them, you know, this reward.
Okay, hello, I'm Sarah Tavis. I am the visual arts teacher at King and also part-time at Thomas Paine. I would like to tell you about a very special woman in our community. Her name is Kelly Jo, and she and her family own Piato Cafe and Catering. About eight years ago, Jennifer Ivory Tatum and Kelly Jo organized a wonderful way to help out our King School community. Kelly Jo would have a buffet at her cafe that brought together many community members and parents of our students together to share a meal together and raise funds to purchase backpacks and school supplies for our students. No matter what money was raised, Kelly Jo has purchased a backpack and all of the much-needed school supplies that every student needs to be successful in the upcoming year. And when you have like about 300 students, that's quite a feat. This gesture of generosity has been so appreciated, all of our students and families, that each year at one of our community assemblies, we invite Kelly Jo to come to our King School so that we can say thank you to her in so many ways. Linda Dar and I have worked with the teachers and the students to create posters, banners, and cards thanking her. We have written poems, or teachers have worked with the students writing poems, even creating a song dedicated to her. One year, I even helped the students create a life-size Kelly Jo, and it was collaged together by the kids. And she had a cape, she had, she was a superhero that flew across the stage, and the kids were very excited because she really is one of our superheroes. This year at King School, our theme is Pay It Forward, which you can probably see on all our, back of our shirts. And I created the biggest monarch possible, as you can see, and I had all of the kids sign the back of it to say thank you to her for her continued generosity. Our teachers will be working with our students to write or draw a picture about how they will be paying this forward, paying this kind gesture forward to someone else. At our assembly, we will share some of these Pay It Forward plans to demonstrate to Kelly Jo how her act of kindness will be multiplied and spread throughout our community. And I want to invite all of you here to King School during our community meeting, and I can email you the exact date and time, it's end of September, to help show Kelly Jo how much our students, parents, and teachers, and our district leaders appreciate her dedication to make a difference in the lives of the children in our King School community. The students loved the monarch so much that I was making it. Oh, here, I'll use the crown. It's okay. The students loved the monarch so much that I decided that I would make another one for our King School so it can fly to our nominated class of the month, their, their classroom. So we nominate a classroom who's been really showing outstanding behavior and great things, and so I'm going to put this little crown, the Miss Curfew against the red, on the butterfly so they get to have the butterfly in the room and really be proud of themselves, and that's what we were doing, so. Sure.
Okay, so next, exciting thing happening at King is STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. And so one of the challenges put forward to teachers this year is what's called Genius Hour. And Genius Hour is a way for students to display the four Cs, is what we call four Cs, creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking. And think about the real world and the technology world. Google, and Google CEOs, what they do with their employees is they give them at least 20% of the day to have them be creative. And that's how we got all these Google products, Google Classroom, Google Sheets, and so forth. And so we want to encourage that creativity with our students as well. And teachers can do that by incorporating 60 minutes or at least 30 minutes on every Friday and have them create, collaborate, creatively think, and communicate. And so we're working hard on our Makerspace. This is an example, this picture right here is an example of one activity where it may be a little hard to see, but there are chords going into little glasses of water, making notes, making keynotes, making notes on a piano. And it was the coolest thing presented by Mr. Brian Lake, and this was during a PTO meeting. This is an example of bringing little chicks into the classroom, and this is a kindergarten classroom, and then seeing the students sketch, doing what we call scientific illustrations, having them sketch the process, and having a live little chick come alive in the classroom. And unfortunately, we don't have a really great video from fourth grade showing what they've done through science. We have a new ESL model that was talked about a little bit earlier by Dr. Bynum. We have a new ESL model that was talked about a little bit earlier by Dr. Bynum. By having this new ESL model, as you know, the French-speaking students are at Yankee Ridge now. So we've incorporated more inclusive practices. We have three additional classrooms. We have one ESL teacher per grade level, which in all, it's encompassed less transitions.
So to continue that conversation, class sizes at King have always been, I've been at King 10 years, I've been in this district 10 years, and I, this has been my smallest class. I've always started the year as a fourth grade teacher with at least 29 to 32 and ended the year. One of the things that I've been able to have a conversation with my staff just through everyday talking is how much better our morale feels walking into the day knowing that I only have 16 students. I was blown away this year. Having three classrooms with 16 students, one of the things that I can notice from the 10 years that I've been in this hallway is I haven't seen the level of behaviors that we have experienced. Last year at this time, we were really dealing with some serious behaviors, not because, you know, the kids wanted to, but their life environments were different. And when you put all of those into two classrooms, there is things that are going to happen. It's not about the teacher, we're doing our best, but I feel that the level of teaching that we have been able to do in this building in just three weeks has been amazing. We're working together collaboratively, even though the ESL teachers are new to Eureka. One of the things that our team has been doing is we've wrapped around our fourth grade teacher, and so what we've been able to do is take three classes, divide them up between myself and the other class, so that she can learn how to teach Eureka, but that it still only puts 22 kids in my class. My spare teacher comes in my room, that other teacher goes into the other fourth grade room, so we have two bodies. We're able to teach math much more effectively than I ever had in the three years we've taught Eureka. So I will say, first of all, employee morale is up. I've heard everyone say, gosh, it's just great to have 15. That's going to make a huge difference. We're not at the bell curve already, starting the school year with, oh my goodness. We feel that even with the ability, I feel much more comfortable with the relationships that I've been able to build. And I consider myself, one of my strong points is relationship building. If you've been in my classroom, I am very blessed to build a great relationship with kids, but at the same time, when we've got several different items, I'm able to talk with them more individually, I'm able to meet their needs, and I feel that my parent-teacher conferences, I'm looking much more forward to them because I will have so many positive things to say about the academics as opposed to the issues that we're having. So if we're looking at this model, and when we tie this into racial equity, which I've been on that team for three years, we're going to see, I hope, in years to come, and we know that this will be a process, I hope that we will see the one in our building, the level of DRs will go down. We're constantly speaking about the number of DRs that we have in particular groups of races that are identified in that. I hope for our, it will go down, and believe that it will as long as this model remains. And then, linked thinking forward, I believe the model will look better at the middle school and high school. So many times, we hear the middle school saying, oh my goodness, these kids are low. If you've got three teachers able to meet the needs of an academically low student, they're going to come into the middle school much better equipped, and then they're going to enter high school much better equipped, and I believe our district then will begin to see the level of academics that we have seen in the past continue to grow, because what we've done is met the needs of the teacher, the student, and the community by making our classes much more smaller. Thank you.
I'm going to talk to you about our different parents' student engagement things we're having at King Elementary. I passed out the first event we're going to have, well, actually, our second event is Grandparents' Day. I passed out some flyers. We're going to have, it's Grandparents' Day and Special Persons' Day on this upcoming Friday. We invite all you, all you here tonight, because everyone is a special person, if not a grandparent. So you're welcome to come anytime between 8:10 and 2:50 to come visit our school. The type of events we're going to have is you can come in and you can do one of these activities with our students. Right here, it says, you place a hand, you glue a hand on a paper and a heart on there, and then you put a Hershey's Kiss on there, and it says, I'm blowing this sweet kiss your way with a wish for grandparents and Special Persons' Day. And this first grader did this in four minutes. He timed it. And then also, during lunch, we are going to be taking pictures with a frame that I made with either a grandparent or a special person with any student that you would like to during that time on Friday, at anytime during any of the lunch periods between 10:50 and 12:30. So you're welcome to come anytime during that period. And then after that, we have a new event called Dads and Donuts. And what Dads and Donuts is, is that because Father's Day is celebrated during the month of June, we would like to celebrate our dads during the school year, because a lot of times dads feel left out because Mother's Day is during school year. So, you know, we would like to celebrate our dads. So our uncles, or grandpas, or other male role models, and more. So, we would like to celebrate them on October 19, 2018, and we're going to celebrate them by giving them a donut, and the moms or the women in their lives are going to give them a donut and receive them that morning. So we're going to cater to you that morning, all the males at King Elementary. Then also, we have Moms and Muffins, that is going to be in May, of course, May 10th, that's from 7:45, 8:15. So, and then after that, we have our PTO, which is Parent Teacher Organization, and then we have our Parent PAC, which is the Principal Advisory Committee. And then also, we have our Monarch Leaders, and then we have our First Yearbook Club at King Elementary, which we're bringing back our yearbook again at, excuse me, at King Elementary, and we're starting our Yearbook Club. We're going to be having our third, fourth, and fifth graders are going to be sponsoring our yearbook. They're going to be in charge of making sure they format our yearbook, they're going to be picking our pictures out, they're going to be choosing the different events that's going into our yearbook and everything, they're going to be in charge of writing, the writing technique, the technology skills, the photography skills, and the design. They're going to be helping us complete it. Then we also have our Upstanders, and those are our leaders in the school, and those are our fifth grade leaders. We also have our Writing Club, and one of the pictures, you see Ms. Lou and one of our first graders, he is interviewing Ms. Lou in that picture, which was really good, in our Writing Club. And then we also have our Media Club. In our Media Club, those people, our young people will be walking around our school, taking pictures. They'll be in charge of sometimes doing our morning announcements, they'll be taking pictures, they're in charge of our community monthly meetings, they'll be coming into the classroom, taking pictures, action pictures of the teachers in the classrooms. They'll be going around, making sure that different things are going on, they'll be part of our news letters, all of those different things. We want them to be part of knowing about journalism and everything, engaging and exercising a part of our media. And then we have our 21st Century After School Program that we have, that we've been having for basically the last five years.
Okay, the other fantastic thing happening at King School is we have two additional preschool classrooms. And this means that we have 34 slots, 34 wonderful four-year-olds at King School, which is opening the doors to students getting used to an elementary building, an elementary schedule, and the siblings just love seeing their four-year-old brother or sister or cousin, or they just love it. And it's been a wonderful experience. So these are the two different classrooms. And it's full day, it's not half-day, it's full day.
And King School hopes you have a terrific school year.
Thank you for having us.
Don't go anywhere yet. Sit back down. Any questions?
I have something.
Yes, put it in.
I just want to, I'll be there on September 7th, because I got six kids over there to see, so I'll be over there at noon. The second thing, you're right about the four-year-olds, they were excited, I saw them, they thought, they were like the older kids. So, because I know one in particular. So, I will come over, I'm so happy to see everybody so gay and like the small classes, because you know I'll be over there. So, thank you all, that's great presentation. I'm so excited about this year.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I have two, have simple questions. I certainly applaud the notion of small class sizes, you know, boy, I hope that continues. But I wasn't clear, were you saying that that only, you're only able to achieve that at the fourth grade level, or is that something you're seeing across the, across the K through five at King this year?
K through five, I've heard, again, just talking with our colleagues, we have now, what used to be the ESL model prior to this year was that ESL-certified teacher taught two separate grades. So in the morning, they would teach a grade, so say for instance, a fourth grade, my ESL teacher taught fourth grade, and then in the afternoon taught second. So that means they only had a class for two, two and a half hours in the morning, and then that afternoon. And then they were support. So now, we have a fourth grade ESL teacher, so that means three strands, where it used to be two strands. So you take three, third grade has always been three strands in the last few years, they always took, we always had to take three third grades and put them into two fourths. So we took classes that were small, put them into two, and when you have a level of behaviors, there's no easy way to do things. And we're here to teach them, but one thing that I see has been very beneficial, is the ability to make better relationships, to have more time to plan for teaching. I have felt, I didn't have to write 30 main tags out, and when you think about those little logistics, those are time-consuming, so it takes up my planning time, or another teacher's planning time. I have really felt much better at my planning this year to be able to effectively teach. I feel we've always done good teaching, but I don't think you could see it as well amongst the levels of challenges that each teacher has had to endure.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think the small class sizes are essential across the district. The other, just a quick question is, it just occurred to me, now the King School enrollment that Dr. Bynum reported on earlier, does that include the 34 early childhood students, do you think, I mean, the 293, that includes the 34 ECE students?
Actually, doesn't it? That's K five.
Oh, that's just K five, okay.
It says right here, all the early childhood students are in that 255 number. And so, it's only K five. But many students have been accelerated since kindergarten.
Dr. Bynum, when did you take that data? It says August 27. Okay. So, so really, I mean, we'll have. Okay.
I want to activate.
So in the building, I mean, really, it's accurate, 293 plus 34, the number of youth at King. Right, yeah, okay, thank you.
And so, building on Peggy's question, it's the same number of FTEs, you're just using them differently at the fourth grade level?
At all grade levels.
Correct, correct, three sections at every grade level.
All right, thank you.
I really appreciate this broad discussion of, in qualitative terms, on a lot of the changes you're making at King on many fronts, including academics, parent engagement, student discipline. But what qualitative, or quantitative assessments are you putting in place to, you know, gain understanding that these changes are having a positive effect?
Thank you for that question. One of the changes I've done with the school improvement team, from last year, we met once a month, and it was solely on looking at assessments that had an impact on instruction. What I'm doing differently this year is increasing the number of school improvement meetings, one solely concentrating on school culture, and one concentrating on the specific goals. I found it very important to look at, you know, as a culture, as a King School, how are we doing? What's the feeling? What's the temperature today? You know, I don't want to take it, I don't want any guesses or anything like that. This is my team, we're strong leaders, what's, what's the feeling out there? What do we need to do? So one of the quantitative would be observation and discussion. So that would be one way that we're gauging this, to seeing how it's going. Another one would be working on a survey, on a survey. So we have a discipline survey that was sent already, we're going to work on creating a survey on climate.
And just to follow up on, on Mr. Plotsy's question, what are the, what specific assessments do you use for the reading fluency goal?
Okay, that assessment, we use BASS with our ODMS assessment, and we use AIMS Web.
And in-class running records, teachers use, so one of the things that I try to do is, when I identify through the BASS assessment that I've completed, I know those kids that need that fluency, so I'm going to embed that in my guided reading group. Once a month, I will be taking for those students that I feel need it, that fluency assessment or comprehension assessment. So it'll be using our district assessment as well as using our running record assessment per teacher.
Thank you. Okay, anything else?
One of the things that Ms. Lundowski didn't mention is she just submitted a proposal to DART Foundation for a Makerspace Lab. They had a $25,000 grant, and she was really excited about, thinking about the ways that she could expand STEM education across grade levels, so that's something that recently was submitted and in the works, so, yeah.
Let's hope for good results then. All right. Okay, thank you very much.
I will say, as you're leaving there, I looked up, and I believe, and Ms. Lou, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the community meeting at which the Monarch is going to be presented is September 27th, that's a Thursday morning at 9:00 AM, does that sound right? Okay. All right. I got it, I got it from a reliable source, which I think was your Monarch newsletter from this one, okay.
Okay, we have no policy reviews tonight. We do have two public hearings. These go pretty quick, so we'll see how things go. First public hearing is on our district FY19 budget, so I hereby open the public hearing and encourage anyone in the room that wishes to comment on the district budget to do so. Seeing none, we close this public hearing. Next, we open a public hearing on the FY19 Urbana Adult Education Budget. Public hearing is open. I have to do this, I'm sorry, it's part of the rules. Public hearing is open. Anyone wish to address the board regarding the Urbana Adult Education Budget? Seeing no one looking like they're getting out of their chair, public hearing is closed. We now move to our action items for this evening. 10.01 is, well, we actually, we can do this either as a consent agenda or as individual action items. I believe that we can do this as a consent agenda.
Have any discussion on this?
No.
And why not?
You can. Which one would you like taken off?
On the superintendent evaluation process, because as of this morning, it was the first time I've even seen the final draft on this.
That is not true, Ruth Ann, it's been emailed to you many, many times.
No, on a final, that was going to be before us tonight. This was the first time I saw it, because I asked for it last week, I said, and I was told it was going to be here, tonight. We've had bits and pieces, and we've had a discussion about it, yes. There's a lot on here that I did not expect, because now I have a timeline to go by that I hadn't seen, and some other things that I.
Yeah, they did go out on Friday.
Yes, they did, and I said, I was not able to open things over the weekend, Lloyd was out of town, she tried doing something remotely from where she was. I didn't get a chance to see it until this morning, barely. I took 15 minutes out of my half-hour lunch break today to read it, and I kept reading it until I got here tonight. And I have a lot of notes.
Sure, well, then we would like to hear your questions. Let me just give a quick overview for like the listening audience, for those who don't know.
So. So let's start back a little bit. Since we're not doing this as an individual action, as consent agenda. Ten point one is superintendent evaluation process. And that's what we're discussing at this point in time.
Right.
Okay, Peggy?
Let me just give a brief overview. At the June fifteenth special meeting, Ann Hall and I agreed to revise our evaluation process, superintendent evaluation process. And consulted with, you know, like I said, I know many of you know this, but this is for the viewing audience. Consulted with Patrick Rice, who is our representative at the Illinois Association of School Boards, who sent us several examples of really helpful forms that Ann and I looked at and sort of combined and put together a draft that we felt pretty good about. In addition to that, we also put together a climates, a survey for superintendent direct reports to assess climate and relationship health. Those two forms were then sent to our legal counsel just to get input. And we made some changes based on their input, on his input, Dennis Weedman's input. And then at the end of July, we sent those draft forms to the board to get your input and got comments from everyone by the, by early August. And so what you see here is, are the forms, the evaluation form and then the survey that reflects input. And I have to say that there is, we heard from everybody, but the forms you see today are essentially unchanged from the ones we shared at the beginning of August. There's some, there's kind of cover information in the timeline, as you say, Ruth Ann, you know, we kind of put on just to give people a sense of how we expect the timeframe to go. I mean, we talked about the timeline, but this kind of puts it down so you have an idea. We're a little bit late doing this, yeah, we didn't get it, right, we are. Because we like to have it done a little bit sooner than this, so. So anyway, so that's the backstory. There's an evaluation form, a written form that would be completed by the board as well as the superintendent. Same form, the superintendent providing his input and then our, using the same form to provide our input. And then the survey is sent at a separate time to superintendent direct reports. So, Ann and I would be happy to respond any, any questions anyone has about what's before you.
I knew that we were going to be doing a direct report survey with other employees in the district way back in July on one of these little feeler things that you sent out email-wise. That you and Ann proposed interviewing a sample of anywhere from eight to twelve central office staff with a short survey.
Right.
Where are we at with numbers for that? Is it eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve or more that you are planning to? These are little details that I know nothing about.
Sure.
And I, and I want to know what the process is going to be for this.
And that was the July draft. And since then, after we got input from you and as well as legal counsel, the draft you have today is a survey, not an interview, but a survey to all direct reports. Superintendent direct reports. And there are, I think, twenty-seven. So unlike the early draft that we were kind of initially proposing, where there would be a select, a small sampling of those interviewed, this is a written survey to all direct reports. And that was something that our legal counsel suggested to us. So.
It basically makes it more equitable, equitable. Because we're not trying to pick and choose. We just want to get an overall climate survey that if it's everybody who directly reports to the superintendent, nobody's left out, you know, there's no second guessing. And that was, that was pretty much at Dennis's instruction to make it fair, right?
Right, and the interview would take, would be much more time consuming of the survey as something that he was much more accustomed to, so. So, yeah, so we're not talking about the. We're not talking about interviews with a select sample. The draft you have today is a written survey. And you've got all the questions of the written survey.
There's ten.
Yeah.
There's ten that are going to the direct report reporters, right.
Seven, seven questions, right.
Seven, that's right, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
And.
And was that not communicated to us in an email in early August?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and it's going to be at twenty-seven. They're sending out twenty-seven.
Yeah, I believe it's twenty-seven, right.
And these are going out by mail.
Correct.
That's what your timeline says, it's going out by mail. And then other than these then being returned to the chairman or the president of the organization, which would be John, it has on here that they're coming back to you and Ann.
Right.
Right, because they're the ones who put this together.
Right, and so we'll be summarizing those results as well as the results that you'll be completing on the form. And we'll be sharing a summary of results without names, both in the case of the direct reports as well as in the case of your summary, just as we've done in the past when you completely.
Sure, I'm, I'm.
Right, so it'll come.
I'm great with the summary. When do we get together to see all twenty-seven, if twenty-seven are returned?
You'll see the summary, what we're hoping, we hope on September twenty-eighth to share a summary, you know, on the timeline. Of course, this is our proposed.
That's summary, when.
Yes.
And you'll have all, if twenty-seven respond, you'll have all of those there at this meeting for us to look at.
No, just as, no. Just as, just as when we have done evaluations before, we have, I have not had all individual. To be looked at. I have summarized it and provided it to the board in summary form.
Right, because that's just the seven of us. A summary of just the seven of us. We've never introduced other people into this process. This is new. We need to talk this out on how this is going to be and how we're going to set, you know, parameters on this and take it forward.
And the ISBE and our legal counsel have recommended and given us guidance that this is how it should be done.
Okay.
All right. Again, I'm saying this is the first time.
And we agreed at an executive meeting that we had in late June, when Ann and Peggy took this task on, that they would be in charge of it all the way through.
The only thing that's changed really is cosmetic is the delivery method. It's, the questions are the same as what you got, Ruth Ann, when Peggy sent them all out, it was about a month ago. The only thing that's changed is just, and I thought we had said this in earlier emails, that it wouldn't be a sit-down interview, it would be mail-in. And then the number, the number of reports. Because, you know, with hiring and rearranging of staff and stuff, that number was a little bit fluid over the summer. And now we know how many we're going to be mailing out. And that's why it had to be now.
Yeah.
We had to settle on it now after school year started, kind of.
Then I've also got a question about your, September twenty-eighth is when you're going to share the information, compile the information, just share it with us. But then we on the October, the seven of us will receive our evaluation to fill out.
Correct.
Separately, why are we not doing this in tandem?
Because you'll need the response from Superintendent Owen as well as the responses from the, the direct report survey to inform your responses on your survey.
Why would I want those ahead of time?
Well, because some of the questions, specific, well, all of the questions relate to the information you'll get from Superintendent Owen. And some of them specifically relate to the questions from the direct report. So what they say will influence in some degree how you will complete your, your evaluation form. So we want you to wait until you have the benefit of that information before you complete your form, which is why it's October first.
Owen will state his goals and everything that he will be working on.
One of the criticisms of the past process is that there were various questions on the form that we were ill-prepared to answer. And so this is a way for, to better prepare us to respond to some of the questions.
I'm just thinking we should do it all in one sitting.
Well, see Superintendent Owen's going to give you his evidence to support each of the standards that we're going to be rating on. And that'll be helpful because we have some information, but we don't have all information. Some of the questions that ask about climate and relationship health, we have some information, but often it's secondhand. And so the information from the direct reports will give us some more details that will help us complete our form. I think, I think we'll just be more informed because I, I agree with John. On the ten years I've been on the board, there's always been two or three or four questions on the form that we used to use in the past that I would simply say, I don't have enough information to respond. And so we're hoping that this new form process will.
Right, because we had a scale that had sixteen different ways to rank.
Right, and sometimes we have to say not enough.
We're down to the four. And you and I discussed the reasons, the reasons why we went with four.
Right.
Altogether, weeks and weeks and weeks ago. I'm trying to look through several pages of notes. So now that you're talking it out with me, since this is a first, I mean, really, and the public doesn't know anything, let me whip back to this. This is a first reading. I mean, it really is a first reading. And at the same time, we have to go back to the fact that we've never have needed to put a superintendent, a form on the schedule to be approved. John pulled together the tool that we've used for the last several years.
I did not pull that together. That was, that was the form that had been used for the last three or four superintendents. Not the last three or four years, but for the last three or four superintendents. So I have no idea if it was approved or not. And ISBE strongly recommended that we approve the form.
Right.
Sure.
Because it's known different. But it's an internal document for us, it's not a public document.
Yeah, this is a first for us, yes it is. And this should really be a first reading, in my opinion, if we're going to use term, let me throw out the terms, past practices, so on and so forth. We really should be doing a first reading on this. And I need to keep, keep bringing it back that there's been a lot of times where we're not doing a first reading on a lot of things and all of a sudden it is on the agenda. And we've had our past practice, generally, most of the time, putting something out there ahead of time that we do a little study on, then we do some thinking about it. Then we come back and we work on it. Or we bring up some more changes or tweaking or whatever like that.
We did do that over the summer when Peggy had sent out the samples and asked.
Not publicly.
I want to remind, I want to remind everybody, I want to remind everybody that the first reading is a, is an opportunity for the public to see what we're doing for a public document or for a public policy. This is not a public policy. This is a, within the board, evaluation tool. It is not something that we are soliciting, nor are we required, nor is it in our best interest to seek public input on this particular document. It is an internal document that the board has generated for its own use in our assigned task that we have statutorily and by contract, by the superintendent's contract. It is our responsibility to review the performance of the superintendent.
Right.
This is not a public review of anyone's performance in the district. This is, this is an internal document to the board. And that's why we don't need a first, a public first reading with an opportunity to post it on the website and all the things that go through after a first reading before we vote on it. This is an internal document.
So I guess, as Ann said, Ruth Ann, we were sort of hoping the month of August when we send it out in its various draft forms, then have meetings with people who, you know, found it helpful. I know you and I met at length, but that kind of would provide time for people to provide more input. So, so we're hoping people felt.
There are no surprises, I mean, for us on this. You know, the tweaks that Peggy made to it mostly are just in the way she crafted the letter, you know, within the timeline itself. Because I've read over all the different drafts she had. It was literally just the wording of the email.
There were some typos and syntax.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. But the essence has been there, of every one of those questions has been there since the beginning.
Yeah, I know. When I was going through, I noticed that there, on one of these, that there is like a word missing, but you understand what the, what it's going to say.
I have approval of the new instrument. That we're not spending money, so unless there's a request for a roll call vote, we can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion is carried. Ten point two, our next action item is approval to name Yankee Ridge gymnasium after Nancy Thies-Marshall. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
It has been moved. All in favor, say aye. Is there any discussion? Sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion is approved unanimously. Our study topics this evening, we begin with our summer transition report. Linda Gibbons.
Yes, we have Linda Gibbons, Dr. Joe Weemelt and Mr. Lawrence Reed coming up to talk about the summer transition programs. Linda, as you know, is Director of Grant-Based Programs. Dr. Weemelt is our new middle school principal. And Mr. Lawrence Reed is a student interventionist at Urbana High School. He's been with the district for a number of years as a history teacher at Urbana High School. And this summer, he took on the role of coordinating the middle school and high school transition programs. And so I will let them talk about what they were. It's first for the district. And so it's kind of a new program. We wanted to talk a little bit about the purpose, the outcomes and potential future. Take away.
I mean, we're happy to be here because this was a pretty exciting program we had this past summer. So, thank you for inviting us, Dr. Bindum and Dr. Owen. And I'll just run through the program real quickly, kind of how we did it. And then Lawrence is going to talk a little bit about the surveys and the information we heard from students. And then we have a couple of teachers that are here too that will talk specifically about what activities they did. And then Dr. Weemelt will talk at the end about what impact it's had at the middle school. So, this could be a process here. We had this really wonderful slideshow that was done at the end of session one of the transition program. You're going to be able to see students participating in the program and doing various activities. But it is rather large and I've heard that it might be a challenge to get it up and running. So, but we're just going to have it in the background so you can just review it while we're talking. So the, the program took place for Urbana Middle School's sixth graders, incoming sixth graders, and Urbana High School incoming ninth graders. Students attended two three-week programs, three weeks in June and three weeks in July. They were full-day programs, nine to three, Monday through Thursday. Not all students participated in both sessions, but several did, many did. So. So the program was funded by an ISBE grant called the Healthy Communities Grant. And we were able to use the funds to cover the entire program for the summer. I'm not sure if these are reoccurring funds, if we'll have this option for next summer or not. But it was a wonderful use of the money, I feel like. And so after we were able to access the funds, Dr. Bindum started the conversation with us. You know, wouldn't it be awesome if we could do some kind of a transition program for those two grade levels? And so we started within central office talking about what we might do. What, what might this program look like? So Dan Webster, Yvonda Smith, Dr. Bindum and I, we met. We talked about, you know, how does it, how does a program like this look? And one of the main things is we decided that we didn't want it to be like our traditional summer school programs at the middle school or at the high school. We wanted this one to be different. We wanted it to really focus on social skills for students. What were those necessary skills that kids need when they go into that next big grade? We talked about, we wanted it to focus more on social, emotional learning, conflict resolution, critical thinking, leadership and teamwork. We wanted to focus on skills that would help students feel successful, confident, once they arrived at their new school. We looked at skills that helped. We looked at skills that helped students feel connected to the new school and show respect for their new school. Ownership. Know familiar faces and where to go for help. And I will say, you know, they got to know other students, they got to know staff. It was pretty exciting. They knew that they were not alone. It's a stressful time heading into a new school year, and I think one of our teachers will talk about that, too. And they really built their confidence by participating. They learned the expectations and procedures of the middle school and the high school. And they learned the systems which were in place, like restorative practices and advisory. And finally, one of the most important parts to me was that they learned acceptance, tolerance, and understanding of differences in students. There we go. Thank you. So from that point, after we had kind of figured out what we wanted to do, we posted positions, we hired positions. Lawrence was one of the first to be hired as the coordinator for the program. He did a really fantastic job of kind of, you know, overseeing the whole initiative. We really looked for a culturally diverse group of staff for the program, one that resembled or reflected the students who were attending and those who were in our middle school. Many of the staff that we hired had extensive experience with 21st Century Community Learning Centers at the high school or splash at the middle school, Dr. Williams and Lille School. We found a really amazing group of staff to participate. They were super enthusiastic. They were teachers and support staff from a variety of disciplines at the middle school and at the high school. We also hired some fifth-grade teachers at Lille and at Dr. Williams. They were part of the dual-language program at those two buildings, so they were bilingual. And we hired some support staff from the elementary buildings, too. And we rounded it all off with several of our SEA, or Student Education- totally lost it there. Thank you. And clinical professional staff from our district. So they were a part of each of the teams, but they also had the ability, they could pull kids out of the classroom if they needed to, or interact one-on-one with students. So the staff really believed in the mission of our program, you know, understood why transition was important for our students heading into sixth grade and ninth grade. You know, they fully embraced the whole concept. They were creative, enthusiastic. They designed daily activities to help students make the transition to middle school and high school. Teachers and staff were divided into four teams, and they came up with overall theme of the week. They had great ideas. Just made the transition a lot easier for the students. Each week, the students rotated to another team, so they were able to experience most of the themes. We partnered with two community groups. One of them was Tracy Dase from Dream House, a community group. And he had Regina Parnell come into the program, and she facilitated something, my favorite part. I don't know if it was everybody's favorite part, but I really enjoyed it. It was called Cheers and Chance. And it is what it sounded like. It was a really large, noisy activity that all students participated in each morning. And it really helped them develop a sense of community before they broke into their more individual, smaller groups. We also had the Park District leading daily activities. And finally, we had Mrs. Price, Ms. Price, who's a teacher at the middle school, and Ms. Rosser teach cooking classes, too. That was the time when kids really worked together to read a recipe, plan it out, make the recipe, and then, as Elaine Spongen talks about, breaking bread together. So it gave them a really nice time to talk and get to know each other, too. So each afternoon, the students participated in a community project. So after they had lunch, they participated on their teams. And they would get to know their UMS teacher. They did individual activities that really built on the whole theme of community. And then finally, at the end of each session, Lawrence facilitated a parent involvement and community involvement session where parents came in and heard students talk about what they'd done, what they'd accomplished, how they changed. They got to hear the cheers and chants, and then maybe take a tour. The students would take them around the school and take a tour of the building. So I guess, just looking back on it, I feel like all pieces of the program were relevant and that maybe there are areas we could improve on for upcoming summers. But I really feel like it was important, relevant to our students, and integral part of our summer with those students. So now I'll just turn it over to Lawrence, and he can tell you a little bit about the survey information he collected.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So we traded a survey, and we pretty much came up with several questions that I'm going to read to you. And these are what some students responded. So first question, how effective were your teachers? From a scale of one to 10, 10 being the best. Seventy-seven point three percent of students rated that their teachers were six or better. The next question is, did you make any new friends? Eighty-three percent of students said that they made new friends. Next question, what did you learn during the program that will help you in the fall? We have several responses. One student said, "I enjoyed learning about cultures, subcultures the first week, and being with Ms. Price." "I liked the program because I had a great experience. I got to go on tours, and I got to learn the buildings and practice lockers." What would have made your experience better? One middle schooler said that if they got a chance to meet some of their seventh-grade students, and that seventh-grade student told them about their experience while they were in sixth grade. And then finally, what did you learn during this program that will help you in the fall? One student said, "How to act in high school and how to prepare for the future. Just keep trying and not give up." And finally, their expectations and how to get around the building. So we had about 129 students registered total, and 97 attended the first session, and 75 this second session. So I feel like the program was very successful. Our major goal was to ensure that our students were leaders amongst their peers. So I think it was very effective. We, at the beginning of the year, we had an assembly, and we pretty much just showcased them and pointed them out to all the other students, saying, "Hey, these are the leaders of the building. They know what's going on. You can ask them questions." I mean, they participated in projects to make them feel a part of the building. And so I think it was very effective, and if we continue to do this, next year, I think it can grow to be very, very successful. Ms. Bonner, would you like to come up? Ms. Bonner's one of our sixth-grade teachers that had been in middle school, and did you want someone else?
Joy Davila.
Oh, yeah, and Joy, that we left from our high school. Okay.
And, I mean, I see Mr. Sanders here, but I don't know-
Mr. Sanders, come on up. Mr. Sanders is also part of it, too.
So could you just, as you come up, introduce yourselves a little more time? Just, I'm not sure that everyone got to hear who you are, what your roles are, and then talk a little bit about your experience with the summer transition program. Thank you.
So I'm Andy Bonner. I'm a sixth-grade math teacher at the Urbana Middle School. Do you want to introduce yourself, too, and then I'll read for us? Perfect.
I'm Caitlin Sanders. I'm a seventh-grade SRS, like home monitor type position at the middle school, and so I was a support staff during the summer program.
All right. So my goal for the program was to have students feel comfortable in the school. That was my top priority. If you don't feel comfortable in a space, you aren't able to learn, grow, or take chances. I wanted the students to be able to open a locker, navigate the building, make new friends, and know that the adults in the building care about them and will advocate for them. I wanted each and every student to be able to identify at least one staff member from the summer transition program that they can seek out when times get tough and they need help. I wanted students to feel like a UMS student before the first day of school, and we worked hard to make that happen. During our time together, students were able to tour the school, practice lockers, follow a mock schedule, learn behavior expectations, cook in the foods lab, learn about themselves, and build a community of leaders. The students were most excited about locker practice, cooking, and our team-building activities. Students felt much more comfortable after attending the sessions because they made new friends and were able to get to know the building and staff. This program definitely helped the students. I saw tremendous growth in terms of confidence and willingness to share out about themselves. This carried over to the first day of school. I was standing in the hallway as teams of students were being dismissed from the cafeteria. When looking at the long lines of students, it was easy to tell who attended the summer transition program and who did not. I saw nervous postures and even some tears, but our transition students were composed, confident, and ready for the year, and it was the most precious thing I've ever seen in my life. I am so proud of our group, and even after school started, you can tell who attended the program. These students are on task in class, following school expectations, and leading by example. I'm looking forward to this program next year and hope that we can work with this sixth-grade group throughout the school year as we continue to foster their leadership skills and work to make UMS the best school.
I was here for moral support for Ms. Bonner.
Sorry.
I guess just a couple big things that I think the program did a really good job of addressing. I don't think you can really work in our schools for any significant period without thinking about what the kids experience outside of school and what impact that has on them. And so as simple as it is, just having the kids there for up to six weeks, nine to three, Monday through Thursday, I think was huge. And another big thing for me, working in the hallways with kids, is kind of jarring sometimes because, like, I consider these kids really young still, but just like how closed off they are from instruction or even just interaction with adults sometimes. And I found that all the kids who came in were really receptive and impressionable. And I think the teachers really seized on that and just really, you know, got, just dove in with the kids and, you know, taught them that, you know, a teacher may come up to you or have a conversation, and it's not the end of the world. You don't have to freak out. Also, I think what helped was, in my class at least, the student-to-staff ratio was never really more than five to one, would you say? Maybe she can speak to how that compares to during the school year. So I hope the program grows, but I hope we can keep that intimate feel also, because I think that was huge.
All right. Well, my name is Joy Davila, and I am a teacher at Urbana High School. I do ESL in bilingual. And this summer, I had the opportunity to work with the incoming freshmen. We were a much smaller group, but again, talking about, you know, the small, you know, groups really had, we had an opportunity to really get to know these students and for these students to get to know us. And we had a small but diverse group, which meant we had students that spoke different languages, had different learning styles, abilities, and personalities. And they all got along so well, and it was such a great thing to see. The goal of this program for us at the high school was to build positive relationships among the students and the staff, have students become familiar with the school, and build a sense of community. And our goals were achieved, you know, through our daily activities that we planned for our students. Every day, the students had breakfast together, and they also did the cheers and chants with the sixth graders. This provided an opportunity for our high school students to have a leadership role and be seen as positive role models and work with the sixth graders as well. The students cooked almost every day in the food room as well with the staff. And the students learned valuable kitchen skills, which are needed. And, but they also worked as a team together, which was a great thing to see. The students also participated in, like, school scavenger hunts, school tours, and they met with other staff as well, the principal, the assistant principals, and any other other staff that they would see, you know, every day, aside from us teachers. And the students were able to plant a garden, decorate the bulletin boards. We really wanted to do a mural, but we had to do decorative bulletin boards, which turned out amazing. And they created skits and learned about the school rules and culture and learned about study skills. Those were just some of the activities that we did. I truly think this program had a positive impact on our students. When I encountered the students during freshman orientation day, the students that did participate in the program seemed very confident and excited. And I even saw some of the students helping other students that did not participate in the program, which was a wonderful thing to see. And I have one of the students in my class three times, actually, and I've really seen the impact that this program has had on that specific student. Just today, the student was helping her classmates, being a positive role model. We were doing presentations in class, and, again, I teach ESL, so some of our students are new and shy, and she was there helping the students, providing positive encouragement. And I truly think it's because she had this opportunity to grow and become a confident incoming freshman. Okay. Finally, my hope is that we can continue to have this type of program next year and provide a positive and safe environment for our students to grow and learn. I also believe that this program shows our incoming freshmen that they have a fresh start. If they had difficulties in middle school, or, you know, they had challenges, they have this fresh start with a new group of students and a new group of staff that they will be working with for the next four years. That's really much all I have to say. Thank you.
So the picture video's over, so that's our cue to wrap it up. But one of the things I just want to add, as principal at Urbana Middle School, and looking across the whole school and seeing how the different grade levels, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are all adjusting to a lot of the changes at the school, the restructuring, the support services that we put in place, as well as seeing the individual students that, and seeing their faces again through this transition program, they really are the leaders at that sixth grade. Our sixth-grade group this year, even today, I had a staff member ask, like, are the sixth graders still here in the building? Because we don't hear a peep from the sixth graders, meaning a lot of our efforts in terms of restoring conflict and working around the social-emotional needs of our students are happening at the seventh and eighth-grade level, not really at the sixth-grade level, which means students are on task, they're engaged, they're performing well. The teachers are working incredibly well with them. The support staff is wrapping around students in a positive way. But there's a lot of student leadership that we're seeing, and they've all mentioned it already this year. But our sixth grade has had an amazing start. The number of behavior issues or referrals or those sorts of things are like a third of the amount of seventh and eighth grade. And so sixth grade is off to an amazing start. And I do give a lot of it, a lot of the credit to this program because we had, a third of our sixth graders were there in the summer transition program. And all of those students are doing extremely well. And that is spreading out to their peers. And so as principal, it was amazing to build that relationship with them over the summer as a principal, but also to see them grow into the school year and be leaders. A couple of things that we have set up, this week and next week, the next three weeks, we're doing lunches with those kids that were at the summer transition program to check in with them and also talk about some other leadership opportunities this school year. Get a feel for how the transition program helped them with the first three weeks of school, what other things they can do moving forward this year with us, with their peers. And so some of the positive energy, a lot of the positive energy from the summer carried over into the school year, but now we're starting to get a little tired, and we want to revamp it. And so we want to pull on them, the students and staff, to help us get it back up again, moving forward. So that's just a little bit. From my eyes, as at the principal's office, sixth grade has been incredible this year. And it's my first year, so I don't have a whole lot to go on in the past. But from what everyone else is saying, the sixth grade is doing extremely well, and I give a lot of credit to this program. I'll pause.
And just in closing, we'd just like to say thank you for your support, Dr. Bindum. And, you know, it was a great idea, and we had a really good time with it.
Oh, a couple things. Go ahead, Dr. Bindum.
I was going to say that it's all of the staff and students who actually put in the work and energy to make it such a success. I mean, one of the things that I said to, you know, Dr. Owen and other superintendents, or assistant superintendents, is going and seeing that community day at the end was so inspiring for me, like, reinvigorating and just reaffirming why it is that the work that we do is so important. So I thank all of you and continue to do the great work that you do.
A couple of things that I just remembered to add to that. There were a couple students and families that said at the beginning of the transition program, they were planning on going to private schools or moving out of Urbana. And all of the students that came up to me during the summer, the families that said that to me in the summer, came back in the fall and registered at UMS because of the positive experience they had in the transition program. They wanted to stay in Urbana and give it a try, and they're all doing really well, so.
Any questions for the team?
I just wanted to ask how the attendance was, because I ran into a couple of kids, they didn't want to miss it. They enjoyed it. I don't care if they had to go to the doctor appointment, those had to be changed, I know two of them. And so, I know you're doing, and then you brought in the community, Tracy Days and Regina did the Freedom School, so, for years. So, I know that was the dynamic leadership presentation for them to do the cheers. So, I would love to see that grow, because I heard about it in the community, because I don't think I remembered about the program till the kids brought it back, and then some of the parents were talking about it. So, I hope to see it grow. Self-esteem has changed in some of these children, and they're bringing it, not only in the school, but they're bringing it back to the community. So, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, yeah, thank you. It's kind of powerful to hear the observations you shared about the transformation that these young people made in six weeks. So, I mean, so, raise just two questions in my mind. Were these students, the 129 who were part of the program, were they selected by you or are they totally their own people who said, "I want to do this"? So, they weren't natural leaders or ones that you identified as being good prospects for this?
And there were, there were students, I can say, by ending the year last year at Wiley with fifth grade and then coming in, there were lots of students I already knew. And so, if, if the idea is that this was a select group of students that were already doing well in school, that is not, there were, there were some of those. But there, there were students across the board that came. And there were some students that really struggled at the end of fifth grade with anxiety and just fear of school and fear of sixth grade at Urbana Middle School that are thriving right now.
And then the other question I had was, you know, because it sounds like the way your approach was very effective, was it, was the focus and approach suggested by ISPI or was it totally created by you guys?
It was totally created by our team, and then the teachers took those ideas and expanded and just came up with the most, you know, exciting activities for the students.
So, a brand-new curriculum, really. I mean, you know, you guys designed a new, yeah. Kudos to you all.
I think one of my observations is that in this summer program, it was so much built on community and relationship and restore, restoration and restoring kind of conflict, that everything else kind of fell into place after that, when they had this strong sense of togetherness and cohesiveness and just excitement to be around each other, then learning came easy. Sometimes we jump straight to academics without building a strong community in the classroom or in the school, and we miss out on a lot of things. And that's what I think a lot of these students were able to capture.
I hope we can continue. It sounds like the desire is to continue each summer. Thank you.
I'd like to see it at all three grades, to be honest. You know, I'll take sixth grade.
I also had questions, and I think this is fabulous. My own kids are too old for it, and I wish to goodness we'd had it when they were nervous about going to both schools. Is it, when you said it's a grant-based thing, is this a continuing grant? Is it a one-time that you got this year, you got to keep reapplying? Do you know how it's going to work?
I mean, it was some somewhat interesting funding that is coming through community groups throughout the state, and this money has been funneled in to the state board for them to offer school districts a grant. So, now, as long as, how, how long will that money continue? I really have no idea, and we have now spent two rounds of it, and I'm, you know, hoping that maybe we'll see another potential for writing that, maybe in the spring or in the winter. I think I wrote the second grant around spring break, I think.
Well, fingers crossed.
But it seems like, well, I had a few questions about the breakdown of the kids. Did you notice that a lot of these kids who enrolled were first timers? I mean, like, they didn't have older siblings at the other, at the schools ahead of them? They were, you know, the pioneers in their family? That was one thing I wondered about, because, you know, sometimes if you're the oldest in your family, that you're the first one to do this, you don't have anybody's experience to fall back on. I would love to see if there's some way we could take longitudinal data from this even. I mean, is this going to affect the kids' behavior for this coming year and for years to come? Is it going to influence their siblings to take part? Is it, is it going to affect their grades? Is it going to affect what clubs and organizations they take part in, in their incoming experiences and diversify out into new things that they may not have tried? I mean, there's just so much good data you can mine from all of this. If we can keep doing it year after year, I'd be delighted to see follow-up reports. I hope you come back and give us another report next year.
I think that's a really good point, and I think we could get that information. We don't have that right now.
Right. Oh, of course.
But it's something that we could easily find out.
Yeah. And as I'm thinking about a lot of the students, a lot, and this is just kind of anecdotal, just off the cuff right now, most of them I'm thinking about don't have older siblings.
Okay.
So, some of them do, but most of them, they're the first ones in their family.
Another positive. That's great, then, because that might convince them, as you said.
I was thinking of a couple that, that had, these are some of their chants. But a couple of them that had older siblings that had a really rough time transitioning to the middle school, and the parents were wanting this to be something that got them over their fear because their older sibling had a hard time transitioning in, and it did. It was, it was effective at that. But I think the majority were first timers.
Wow. And then, I just also, sorry, just one last question. Can you provide later on the breakdown of the schools that chose to take part in this, like the elementary schools, and, and even if, did you have any kids from outside Urbana who decided to come here specifically because they were thinking of Urbana Middle School, Urbana High School as their school choice?
I think we do have the breakdown already. We bused them in pretty much from all the schools, and it was just, just for our district.
Yeah.
And no outsiders.
Yeah. I'm just hoping we can convince more people to come here.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember of those, of those families that were considering private school, if they were, or if they were already homeschooled and considering private, or if they were private and then considering a different middle school. I can't remember, but we can get that data and get it back to you.
Well, please, please come back and give another presentation, because I would love to hear how this has affected all these kids this year, and if you can do it again, it would be even more powerful to hear the successes. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other?
Other questions? Thanks. Thanks, guys. Our next study topic is a technology report.
We'll invite Mr. MC Neal up, and Mr. Neal is the Director of Information Technology Data Analytics, and he'll talk about the current and future state of technology in the district. And Mr. Neal, if you'll turn on the mic, and Lori, I think, is about to get the lights, right? Thank you.
I am going to take a bit of time, as Dr. Owen mentioned, to discuss the current state of technology with the district and plans for coming months. As this is my first time presenting, and I've only been on board for a little over three months, I want to take a brief moment to reintroduce myself, my background. I've been in the IT field for 15 years, have nine IT certifications across a multitude of domains, everything from server administration, network security, systems maintenance and repair, from companies such as Microsoft, Dell Computers, CompTIA, et cetera. Received my associate's degree in computer and network administration from Parkland College, my bachelor's from Eastern and organizational development, and master's from University of Illinois Urbana, and library and information sciences with a focus in information sciences. And I've worked for organizations such as Dell Computers, City of Champaign, City of Urbana, Parkland College, and U of I, just to name a few. As mentioned, ooh, sorry. As mentioned, I've only been in this position a little over three months. My hope by this time was to have a solid grasp of the inner workings of the district, to have properly assessed the technology systems and products we provide, and also to have evaluated the members of the technology department. Unfortunately, the large majority of my time has been heavily spent towards just keeping things afloat and running within the district. We are severely understaffed in the technology department presently. We're down four key positions right now, and actually in a bit of a perfect storm, we are internally short-staffed. Also, this is the first year that the tech cadres are not in the buildings. Tech cadres were teachers that assisted, they were like a tier-one, first-level technical support. So, if teachers had an issue, they would go to the tech cadres first, and if they couldn't figure it out, then it would go to the technology department. And additionally, this is the first beginning of the school year for many staff members, some of which are in new roles. So, every day is something new as far as learning what's expected and what you're supposed to do, and many times not finding out until something is due that it's on our plate and we need to get it done. The entire department has been stepping up with increased workloads, but myself personally, I've been wearing multiple hats, including the network engineer, server administrator, and tech specialist for a couple of buildings, in addition to my IT director duties. Because of this, many of the things I was hoping to get done, a lot of the initiatives right now, they're just ambitions, or the ones I have been able to implement are beta right now. And as again, I've just been trying to keep things afloat with servers and networking, security cameras, things of that nature. So, I just wanted to go over a few of the things that I have been able to implement. One of which is a ticketing system. Previously, there was a mix of methods for people to report their issues via email, catching technicians in the hallway, calling their mobile phone. There just wasn't a good way to track issues and how they were resolved. Previously, there were attempts to get ticketing systems off the ground, but they had their share of weaknesses, and adoption was lacking. We went live with this three, four weeks ago, and we've been averaging just shy of about 100 tickets a week thus far, and we still don't have everyone using it. It's still a bit of a process. But this new system, it has automation rules to assign tickets automatically to the relevant technician. There's a mobile app for the techs as they're going between the buildings to update tickets, things of that nature. And of course, there's analytics component, so we can see not just how many tickets we're receiving every week, but which building is giving us the highest number of tickets, which will help me as far as staffing. Also, we'll be able to see what services or equipment are causing the most issues. And overall, it just helps our tech team members stay organized, it keeps open communication between the technicians and the end-users, and just allows us to work in a more efficient manner. Even better than resolving reported issues quickly is resolving issues before they're even reported. And on that accord, another thing implemented was a monitoring system. Here are a couple of screenshots from the system, and this is all about just being proactive with getting systems back up and running as soon as possible. The system will routinely check to make sure systems are up and running and they're operational, and if not, it will send notification. And right now, it is configured for to monitor Skyward and our website. Additionally, there are some issues that come up that may not necessarily have to come to technology. These are things that the end-user should be able to resolve themselves with proper direction and instruction. And with this, another thing being implemented is a self-service tech help webpage. And with this, this will contain videos, step-by-step instructions, screenshots with arrows, annotations. And with this, as we see a pattern of tickets come in or emails, we start hearing the same question over and over again that we feel the end-user can resolve themselves, we'll get that put up here. One push that we did recently make is to empower the secretaries to manage Google at each of their buildings. We actually did a training, a workshop with some of the secretaries, going over and showing them the steps and the process. Even with that, we still were getting questions after the fact, whether that was just them trying to get clarification or needing a refresher, and again, sort of having to go over the same explanation over and over again across all the buildings. So, one of the first things we put up was a video on managing Google Groups, and so that walks all the secretaries through how to manage Google for their buildings. These are just a couple of things hoping to get done in coming months. The first is to expand the, that self-service website to be more of a tech hub. With that, there's going to be everything technology-related, so people will be able to go to that one website and report a technology issue, review any training materials, videos. They can make reservations in the middle school and the high school. You have to reserve the computer labs or the Chromebook carts to kind of be a one-stop-shop for everything IT. Expand the monitoring system. As I mentioned, I had just enough time to get it up and running and get Skyward and the website implemented, but when things slow down, I will be rolling that out to all of the servers and all the networking equipment across the district as well. Implementing a documentation system for IT staff, and that's something akin to a wiki or a knowledge base, just something that IT staff will be able to go to if they are needing steps as far as deploying equipment or advanced troubleshooting, things of that nature. It'll kind of be a repository for the techs to be able to go to and get the information they need. Inventorying system, right now, we really don't have an easy way to look up a user and see what equipment they have, or to look up a asset and see which user has, has that. So, that's something that I'll be working on implementing. And also, when this gets implemented, this is going to tie into the ticketing system. At times when we have people changing into new positions, sometimes their equipment will go to other end-users, and if person A has been reporting issues with a piece of equipment and then it turns over to person B's laptop, we can't see the tickets for the previous person who had the equipment. So, we can't get that historical data to know what was happening prior to that person getting it. So, with this, we will be able to get some of that historical data. Beginning planning expansion of one-to-one to secondary schools. Right now, all of our schools in the districts are one-to-one with Chromebooks, except for the high school and the middle school. The high school has the infrastructure built, the middle school does not, so that's one thing we'll have to get done at the middle school. The wireless network right now just will not support one-to-one, so we'll have to get that done. And then at both schools, procuring the Chromebooks, create a shorter-duration equipment replacement cycle. Right now, we have some staff members that are using laptops and computers that are eight, even nine years old. They're already, they're frequently having issues, and they're having to turn them over to techs and getting loaners, or they're having to deal with issues just because they don't want to give up their laptops. So, this is something that we will be shortening that to something more reasonable, closer to around the five-year mark. So, every five years, the systems will be getting refreshed. Create a professional development framework for IT staff, so that's just something where I can properly evaluate the members of the technology department, figure out what competencies are needed for their position in their role, and looking for areas of improvement, ways to sort of better their skill set, and having some sort of infrastructure to provide them, professional development, training opportunities, things of that nature. Increase end-user trainings. This is us just doing as many trainings and workshops as we can for other staff members, whether that's training at opening day, winter institute, if it's a principal saying, you know, "We want you to come to our building one day and do a training on this," just the tech staff being able to, to offer some training to the rest of the staff. I am actually working with Matt and Carol on a strategic action plan for finance facilities and technology, and we'll be using the findings from that, from the community, to help drive future decision-making across all three of those areas. And when I came on board, as Dr. Owen just announced my title, data analytics was added to my title, and unfortunately, again, with workload, I've not been able to do anything with that, and I know there are some people waiting on that. So, that is another area that hopefully I can start diving into soon as well. So, this is all long-term, air quotes, long-term. Short-term, I'm working on just keeping things up and running, as I have been, and trying to get those vacancies filled. up and running, as I have been, and trying to get those vacancies filled as soon as possible. We have one position posted now. We're hoping to get another one posted in the next couple days, third one next week. And I am confident that once we get those folks in-house, and once we're running at 100%, some of the problems we're having right now will be non-issues. We'll be able to resolve issues a lot more quickly, be a lot more proactive with everything that we're doing here, and hopefully start implementing some innovative and exciting new systems and services. That was all I had. With that, are there any questions?
I have a couple of questions. I remember, how long exactly have you been in your position? Because I remember when you came here, but I can't remember exactly how long.
About three and a half months.
I was thinking about three months. And were we down, those staff members, when you came on?
When I, the day I got hired, we were down one. I think two days in, we were down another. About a month later, we lost another, and two weeks ago, we lost the fourth.
How many people are generally in your department, or would you like to have in your department, to actually-
I'll take as many as-
To actually cover the workload?
Honestly, I am not sure. I think once we get these three in, I can properly evaluate. As far as I know, this time last year, we had what we have now, plus the four more people.
So what number total?
There are some people who are sort of in technology but not, so I'd say 10, maybe?
Okay. Thank you. And then, are the majority, like, how many are at the, you know, like, how many housed at the high school, the middle school? Because I know the middle school used to be like the hub for a lot of the technology people.
Yes. So right now, at the middle school, we have a person who's running the lab, who's one of the positions, I said, is kind of in technology but not. And assists in the building with some of the tech issues from staff. I pick up the rest of that slack. Our data center is there, so anything that goes on with the servers or networking, again, I'm in the building for that. At the high school, we have another person who's serving in the lab, manager capacity, and one of our tech specialists who's housed at the high school but is serving other buildings. And we have another tech specialist that's housed at King and is taking care of that school and two others. And right now, I am doing, again, part of the middle school and then two other schools as well.
All right. Thank you.
Really impressed with how much you got done in three months, honestly. Congratulations on a brisk start to your new position.
Thank you, sir.
Outside of, I guess, the open recs you have, if you had a wish list, you know, what would be on it?
You know, if you have a couple hundred thousand dollars to spare, that would be welcome. It's, I think a lot is going to be finance-related, especially when I talk about things like shortening that equipment replacement cycle. Obviously, right now, for buying users' equipment once every eight or nine years, and I'm trying to go down to once every five years, things of that nature are going to increase costs. Things like the monitoring system I'm trying to get, it's free up until a certain point, but our network is so vast that we have to pay for that. So a lot of things that should be implemented, there's going to, it may be a bit of a sticker shock when I start submitting invoices, but this is what's going to allow us just to get a reliable infrastructure and something that, again, we can be, we can resolve issues before they become major instead of acting retroactively once things have hit the fan.
Anything else?
I just wanted to thank you for sharing your short and long-term goals. They're very ambitious, and I do hope you get those positions filled, because I'm sure that's very frustrating.
Thank you.
The decision to end the tech cadre at the building level, was that a long, I mean, a decision made a while ago, or what was the reason for?
That was before my tenure.
Oh, okay. Because I, I mean, I thought they were an effective way to address technology issues, but maybe they weren't. I mean, I-
Yeah. Tech cadre has actually been phased in and out several times in my tenure here at the district office. And there are times when tech cadre has been effective and times when tech cadre has not been effective, and it turns into a position that doesn't have a lot of oversight or accountability. And due to budget cuts and priorities, I mean, they weren't really cuts, but just repositioning priorities of stipends out to teachers, they were phased out. And that decision was made a little bit more than a year ago, that this would be the last year of tech cadre. In fact, there were a couple of buildings, I believe, from Dr. Brynham, you might know better than I do, a couple of buildings this past year that didn't have cadre representation. And so there was also some inequity in terms of which buildings had in-house support through tech cadre and which didn't.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Ms. Anne?
Are there grants or things that we should be going after so you can have some new equipment?
So a lot of our equipment, as far as infrastructure, a decent amount goes through ELITE. But again, that covers switches, routers, just having the infrastructure for devices to connect to. I have not been made aware of anything for the end-user devices, like the laptops, iPads, Chromebooks, things of that nature. That is definitely something I would love to evaluate, looking to see if there's any funding options out there for things along those lines.
Do you have a secretary to do that for you? You're doing everything right.
I am confident, once we get these positions filled, things will slow down and be able to keep up.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Neil.
We're ready for budget discussion.
So we have Carol Baker and Marcellus Gray. Marcellus has been working, he's the development and finance coordinator for health education. He's been working with Carol over the last year on his, I'm going to get the letters wrong?
Chief School Business Official.
CSBO certification, which is Certified School Business-
Chief School Business Official.
Chief School Business Official, similar to the program that Dr. Wemel went through about a year and a half ago.
That's right.
So Mr. Gray is going to be doing more of the presentation tonight as part of his, part of his internship for both the budgets.
Thanks, Don. You took away my intro.
Good use of time.
Yeah, appreciate that. So no, I appreciate working with Marcellus. Like Don said, he's worked with me over the past year, and I'm happy to say he passed his exam. So, is it official? It's official now?
It's not official. I still have the semester to finish in terms of, it's not official. I still have the semester to finish in terms of the internship. And I do have to look at a professional educator's license as well. So there are a few other things that I need to take care of, but, you know, the CSBO exam, it was a four-hour exam, and so that's over with. So I'm happy about that.
Okay. So tonight, what we're going to do, you may as well go ahead and pull up. You're in charge of this. You're in charge of the PowerPoint. I'll do the talking for this part. So yeah, go ahead. These are the topics we're going to talk about tonight. Just to review, we're going to review the 1718 education fund budget to start out, just to kind of see where we ended up last year. Talk about the budget assumptions for the upcoming 1819 school year, which we are already in, some budget highlights, and then we'll do some summary education fund revenue and expenditures, and then give you a snapshot of what our fund balances look like at the end of this coming school year. And then we'll take any questions the board might have.
Okay. So I'm trying to scroll to the-
Just could do this guy. This should be. Yeah, there you go. There you go. Zip right through there. Okay, so first, we're going to review the budget for last year. We actually ended the year, our 18 revenues exceeded our budget by about 1.6 million, and that is huge. As you know, the state actually paid up a lot of bills this year, this past year that they had owed us. They were never quite as on time as they were this last year, so that was a very positive, positive thing for the state of Illinois to actually get caught up on those payments. But again, that dumped a lot of revenues in the 1718 school year, so that's why we had such a big surplus over our budget for that year. Our expenditures in addition also were underspent by about 463,000. That was about 99 point something accurate. I mean, we were really, that's about the closest we've been in our ed fund. To be 400, within 463,000 of a $40 million budget, that was really good. So kudos to all of our staff who stayed within budget, and we need to continue that effort in the coming year to have more results like that. So we budgeted a deficit last year of 227,000, but we actually had a surplus of about 1.8 million. And at your place, I did provide you on an orange sheet, you can see a summary, and we didn't put it in our presentation, but it is a summary of the actual results from last year by fund. So you can kind of see, and this is more from Matt's benefit than anything, we can show that O and M did actually have a surplus of $44,000. So, does everybody have it? It's the orange one.
Before we get giddy, it is important to note that that is pre-audit, and it also is a lot of, what you're saying is that a lot of that extra revenue, we were owed in prior fiscal years. So when the audit prepares and does-
We accrued that during, we accrue it, yeah.
Yes. So a lot of this revenue was accrued in prior years, so be careful.
But what it does, what it does do is it does improve our fund balance as far as we finally get paid up. So the audit is always, you know, it brings in all those revenues that they accrue, that they're supposed to pay us, but then the state takes forever to pay us. So this actually, we actually have the cash on hand. It's not just a entry on the books. We actually got paid, which the audit just books that entry, and we actually got the money. So that is a positive thing. So that was a good end to the year, and again, having that surplus gives us a better positive fund balance moving forward. So as far as the budget assumptions for 1819, our property tax extensions are expected to increase by about 3% due to a CPI increase of 2.1, same as last year, and estimated 6 million in new construction. The hospital lawsuit is still not moving. I mean, it's been at a standstill at the appellate court, I think, for quite some time, so I'm not sure what to say about that, other than we've been waiting a long time. We'll probably continue to wait until we see something there. So, and again, as we'll see later, that money on every one of these summary sheets I give you, that covenant or the Provena TIF III money that is broken out on all of the summary sheets, the amounts that are in red, and we'll go over that in a little bit later, that's the money that's sitting there that will eventually potentially, potentially have to be repaid if we would, if the hospitals would win, and the schools would have to pay back that money. The evidence-based funding model is going to provide us additional tier funding of about 300,000 for this year. Not as much as we would have hoped, but at least we did get tier funding, so that was one positive result. We're hoping in the future that there will be more money put into the tier funding. As a tier-two school, we will, the tier ones and tier twos are the ones that get that money first, so we would hopefully see additional funding from that in the future. And then the other budget assumptions, the board did approve hiring of additional student supports, the clinical professionals, the student engagement advocates, and the assistant principals. Those are all in this budget. And then the salary increases, averaging about 3.25% are as well. Health insurance premiums, we had about the smallest increase we have in quite some time. I think it only went up about 3%. Where in past years, it's been 12, 13%. So that's the first time that's happened in quite some time. Federal funding projections, fairly level, if not even a slight decrease for our title funding. And then transportation fund and our prorations are, we're estimating similar to last year because a lot of that's not finalized yet either. The facility's sales tax receipts are anticipated to produce approximately 3.4 million. That started out in 2010, probably around 3 million, so it's growing ever so slightly, not near as much as we would have hoped, but we're up to about $3.4 million now for sales tax receipts. The budget does also assume that we will, this is our three-year rolling working cash year. We did the last one in 2016, so in February of 19. I'm assuming we're going to do that again. So that is part of the budget, that we will get that $3 million and use that towards technology or future capital projects for the district. The indoor aquatic center loss for this budget is 223,000, up just slightly over last year. We were about 216,000 last year, so up just a little bit. We're hoping that with the new pool pack in the aquatic center, that maybe some of the maintenance on the things that we've had to maintain in the past with the air, the air quality not being quite so good, hopefully that will improve. I know we were at a meeting just a couple of weeks ago with the new pool pack and the air quality being in there for a meeting. You could tell the difference. I mean, it was amazing, the difference that you could felt in the air just-
You can hear it at the front door.
You can hear-
When you pull open the front door, you can tell that the air is moving more in the building.
Yeah. So we're hoping that's going to improve things all around as far as the maintenance of the facility. So, and that was money, coincidentally, that was funded through our working cash, that 3 million working cash that we did last time. That was one of the board-approved projects, was to help the Park District replace that pool pack, you know. And then also, completion of the Yankee Ridge project is also in this budget. So that appears at this point in time, since it is done, to be on budget. So that's something that is always positive to report as well. So just other highlights, Standard and Poor's has given us a rating of double A minus. We've had that for several years and have maintained it, so that's good. In 2017, we also earned the highest financial profile designation by ISBE, which is the financial recognition designation. There is one new thing that I wanted to highlight in the budget for this year. It's not really budget-related, but it's a reporting that we're going to have to do after this school year. Under the new ESSA requirements, schools will have to now report as part of the school report cards, site-based or school-based expenditures, per pupil expenditures. So instead of just having a district-wide per pupil expenditure, it's going to be by school. And as you know, there's several things in our budget that we don't break out everything by individual school. We have a lot of things we pay out of one-line items. So that's something we're going to have to start looking at. We've broken out some things, and some things we're waiting to see how this year goes and how the first reporting period goes, and we might make more changes as the years go on. This is something new. We'll probably have a lot more explanations on this report card to explain why certain buildings are higher than others. But for a lot of the expenditures we have that we don't break out by building, we're going to have to do an allocation by enrollment. So it'll be just taking a total and prorating it based on enrollment by building. But that is an ESSA requirement. All schools are going to have to report that to be on the report cards next October of 19. And just to provide more transparency, to show how districts provide resources within their school district. So now, I'm going to turn it over to Marcellus.
All right. Thank you. The next four slides will basically cover the data as pertains to the assumptions. The next four slides will be the budget summary and the revenues, the project revenues, and expenses for the education fund, as well as the ending balances for all funds. This slide, the budget summary, is the 201819 budget summary, and I apologize for the density of the slide.
They got copies. They got, the purple ones that's on here.
It's the purple one. Yeah. Did I go out?
Nope, you're good.
Okay. So it's a purple handout that you have, and it basically provides an overview of the funds, the estimate- funds, the estimated beginning balances, the budget revenues, budget expenditures, the current year surplus and deficits, as well as the estimated ending balance for FY19. As Carol talked about, the TIF III escrow fund balances are highlighted in red. Again, they are set aside in the event that those funds need to be refunded. Grants are still to be determined and not provided in the data. However, grants are typically around 10.5 million in revenue, and we tend to expend grants to the amount of the revenues. The slide also shows the total all-fund balances, which I'll provide the snapshot. I won't go through all the funds. But the all-fund balances for the estimated beginning balance of FY19 is approximately 8.2 million, plus the 6.5 million that is in the TIF III escrow, for a total all-fund balance of approximately 24.7 million. Budgeted revenues for FY19 are approximately 64.1 million. Budgeted expenditures are approximately 66.9 million for a current year deficit of 2.7 million. I'll talk about that in a moment. The estimated ending balance as of June 30 of 2019 for all funds is approximately 15.4 million, plus the 6.5 million that's in the TIF III escrow, for a total of 21.9 million. If you look at the 2.7 million deficit in terms of revenues and expenses for the current year, and exclude the 2.3 million deficit from the construction working cash bonds, you would have approximately 378,000 deficit. And that construction working cash bond deficit is a result of bond payments made in FY18, which it actually showed a surplus last year of 2.2, and an all-fund surplus of approximately 2.4 million. So nevertheless, expenditures have carried over into FY19. Therefore, if we exclude the 2.3 million, you're looking at about 378,000 deficit this The revenue sources for the education fund, local is at 28.8 million, which is about 67% of revenues for that fund. State is approximately 11.3 million at 26%, and federal at 2.8 million at 7%. The total estimated revenue for the education fund is about 43 million. This is up about 3.64% from FY18 projected revenues. Part of the increase is due to the CPI of 2.1 and the new construction, new business construction of 3 million, which represents about 3% increase in revenues. Expenditures for the education fund are highlighted. Salaries and benefits at 36.4 million, which make up 83% of expenditures. Purchase services at 3.1 million, which is 7%. Supply hours is at 2 million, which is 5%. Capital outlay is about 177,000, at 1%. And other than tuition is about 1.8 million, which is about 4% of expenditures. Total expenditures for FY19 is 43.6 million approximately, which shows a deficit of approximately 600,000. I will say expenditures, projected expenditures over FY18 have increased about 5.4%. So revenues have increased approximately 3.6%. And expenditures in the education fund has increased about 5.4% given new hires within the district. This last slide is basically, excuse me, a projection of ending fund balances for FY19. The education fund, again, does not have the grant funds in it, but it's projected to end at approximately 5 million. O and M is at a deficit of 3.7 million. That service is almost even at 15,000, $15,000 deficit. Transportation is at 91,000. But however, transportation, we're not deficit spending, so our revenues are meeting our expenses in that fund. IMRF, the same, similar situation. The deficit is at 547,000 approximately, and we are not deficit spending in that particular fund either. Construction working cash bonds is about 3.2 million, and facility sales tax is 3.3. Working cash is approximately 7 million. Toward is 179,000. LNS is about 882,000. So those are the projected ending fund balances for FY19.
You can leave it on that side. So basically, that $7 million in working cash is really loaned out to those funds that are all negative for the majority of the year. So that 7 million is, is our internal bank, basically, to loan money to the funds that are deficit spending.
So let me make sure I understood correctly. The figures in red are not part of the figures in black?
No.
Because in times past, it's been.
No, it's always been broken out separately.
Okay.
Yep, it's always been. I want to make sure that the fund balance I show you is the true fund balance, not the fund balance inflated by the TIF money.
All right, thank you.
The TIF money is separate. And that's actually, the TIF money is the reason we are on that financial recognition list.
Right.
I mean, if that ever gets paid back, I mean, that's six, six and a half million dollars. I mean, that is making our fund balances look very good, because when we report anything on our audits or to the state, that money is in our fund balances we report. So the only time I break it out is for you, because I want to make sure that we don't spend that money. That's money we might, I don't consider it ours quite yet, not completely, until this is all said and done. So we will have, the board will have the final budget to approve at the September 18 meeting. I will provide you detail probably later this week. So you'll have plenty of time to look at that before, and ask any questions if you'd like, before the board meeting on the 18th, when you will be asked to approve the final budget. There will be some minor changes. I know I realized today there was $4,000 that I didn't key into an account. So little tweaks here and there, and like I said, the grants are going to be part of it. We're just making some final changes on those, so those will be ready. So I will get that sent out to you, and then, as I said, we'll have request final approval on September 18.
So we have a, so we have a significant accumulated deficit in O and M. Do we have a strategy for closing that gap? Because at some point in time, I mean, that's half of our working cash fund, over half of our working cash fund right there. So are we, from a budget viewpoint, developing any kind of strategy to close that gap?
We've talked at TEAM internally, just about using, I mean, the only, as you know, we're tax capped, so any money I take from our tax rate and put into O and M is going to come from Ed Fund. That money is, you know, we only have a limited amount of tax revenues, and if we are going to increase revenues in O and M, we would have to take from basically the education fund to help out the other fund. So I don't recommend that, but the $3 million working cash is something we've talked about. Eventually, maybe taking, instead of allocating that money to projects all the time, is maybe taking that money and actually putting it toward fund balance. But there's really, other than budget cuts, which is very difficult to do.
Well, have you, have you taken a look at the impact of the statutory maximum tax rate for education fund? And are we within that maximum statutory rate at this level of revenue into the education fund? Because I, we were extreme, we were extremely close.
We're there.
And so I think our growth in revenues in our education fund is going to have to be slowed down.
Well, we have an unlimited levy in special ed, so there is availability in the special ed levy that actually goes into the Ed Fund. So even though we are maxed out at 3.999 in our Ed Fund levy, we still have money in our special ed levy that I am, I've, I increased it probably about.
Well, I think from, I think from a philosophical viewpoint, we as a board need to think about the fact that we're continuing to dig a hole in our operations and maintenance fund while we are allowing expenditures to grow at a faster clip than our revenues by 2% in our education fund. Your projected was revenue increase of 3% and change, and expenditure growth of 5% and change. And so I'm wondering if that is actually an appropriate thing to do while we are at a statutory mix maximum, which is meaning tax caps has not affected one bit our revenue into our education fund. All of our other funds have been impacted by tax caps. And the fund that's taken the lion's share of that is O and M.
Yeah. But we are holding our own. I mean, at least we're not digging the hole more. And as you know, that hole was created when we were doing construction projects.
Well, the current year projected deficit is 118,000.
Yeah.
So that's digging a hole.
But he ended up, he ended up better, we projected that last year, and we ended up better. So I have confidence we're going to end up better this year, too. We hope.
At a 3.7 million dollar hole.
Yes.
Running a surplus of $100,000 a year.
It's going to take a long time.
It's going to take, what, 37 years, 40 years to close that deficit? And at some point, that's going to catch us, because we're going to run out of money in our working cash fund. And so we, I, I just, I think we need a concrete strategy to close that gap in O and M. And if it can't be done through budget cuts, then it has to be done through a reassignment of revenues. And I don't think we can continue to add positions in the district when we're digging holes in our other funds. I just, it concerns me. I just want to lay it out there on the table.
Any other questions or comments?
Any other questions of Carol? This isn't the first time I've raised the issue of adding positions without a proper amount of budget to accommodate it. I've been bringing that up for the last 12 months.
Yeah, I mean, the one question I would have asked is the one you asked, which is what's our long-term plan for digging us out of the O and M and the transportation deficit, ongoing deficit? So I'm glad you asked it. And it sounds like there's a couple of options we have. So thanks for bringing it up. I know Matt's doing whatever he can to try to save money and look at things. Yeah. He obviously did some things last year, because we came out with a surplus, so hopefully.
I think if we looked at the revenue trends in O and M, and we looked at the revenue trends that's been assigned to education, we would find that O and M has been short-changed a lot, a lot.
Well, as a plan by the district.
And so to put the responsibility on Matt or Oda prior to him, because this was developed over many, many years, we need to exercise responsibility in the other funds as opposed to making O and M pay for our excesses or our, our investments in our other funds. And, and so, thanks for paying attention to the budget, Matt, but you can only squeeze a penny so hard. And schools are having to do that in all funds, not just that fund, in all funds. So, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adult education fund budget?
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, switching gears to the, our banner of adult education, FY19 budgeted, there's a handout that if you all have, I'll be going through. It's a one-page budget document. It has the budgeted revenues at the top. The ICCB budgeted revenues for FY19 are approximately 100 and, 453,000. We do have other ancillary revenue that we receive throughout the year. Our WIO grant is level at 156,000. We do have TEOP that we share with the district at 159,000. We have additional hires for SEAs for TEOP at 101,000. We have our storefront FY18 bill that's typically paid in arrears at 155,000. And we changed, we made some changes as to the due dates of the storefront bill, looking to get the bill earlier in the year as opposed to at the end of the year. So that bill was budgeted at 155,000 for, to be received in FY19. And then United Way is budgeted at 70,000. Carl Hospital is at 45,000. And the certified nursing assistant tuition and fees are approximately 36,000, with some miscellaneous revenue indicated from lines 10 through 15. The total non-ICCB revenue is approximately 905,000 for a total revenue base for adult ed of approximately 1.3 million. For FY19 budgeted expenses, our salaries at 923,000 approximately. Purchase services at almost 300,000. Purchase services, I'm sorry, I meant to say employee benefits is at almost 300,000. Purchase services is at 91,000. And supplies and materials approximately 23,000 for a total expenses of about 1.3 million. So we're looking at revenues over expenses for FY19 of almost 20,000.
Any questions? And in a departure from past practice, but since you're learning.
Yes.
Would it be possible to have this budget in a simplified format, but a balance sheet? But I'm assuming we start with an opening fund balance in adult ed, and, just like we have an opening fund balance and a closing fund balance in our other color page? It would be interesting to see a, a tracking like that for adult ed as well, just of interest.
Absolutely. I, I think a document like that could be constructed, not a problem. I think a document like that could be constructed, not a problem.
Other questions? It's good to see this budget in the black.
Thank you. Feels good to be in the black. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, we have no call for any future special or executive meetings, superintendent's report.
I'll just keep it very short, looking at the hour. I would like to just point out a couple engagement things that are related to our strategic plan. Tonight, we hosted our first Tiger Talk, and due to some issues with communication out of my office last week, just focused on a lot of things related to the football game, we didn't get reminders out, but we did have a couple people show up for the Tiger Talk. It was very informal, but very productive, and in order to generate some more interest, we broadcast it live on Facebook, it's up to over 325 views, and we had about 17 people participate through Facebook and actually ask questions during the broadcast. And so we will post those questions up on a frequently asked questions over the next few days, and we are reminding people that on the first Tuesday of every month before the study session in this room, we'll just be hosting a Tiger Talk event where we will have a variety of administrators from the schools here to answer questions, it'll be very informal, pretty much focused on our strategic plan, but also burning issues. And one of the things that came up several times, and so we'll make sure we have members of the middle school administrative team and teacher leadership here, is talking about the new processes and multi-tiered systems of support at the middle school. And so I'm announcing now that the October 2nd Tiger Talk, we'll have Dr. Remelt, who just left, but Dr. Remelt and a couple other people from the middle school here to answer questions about that, and so middle school will be one of the focuses of the next Tiger Talk. And then also, we are going to be doing a Walk As One through Northwood and Ivanhoe communities on the 27th of September, and that will focus a lot on our Latinx families, and we will have a number of people from within the district who are Spanish-speaking, but it's not the people who volunteer, and I would encourage all board members to come out. You do not have to be a Spanish speaker to come out and meet families and talk about what's going on in the schools and what supports we have for our families in the Northwood and Ivanhoe neighborhoods. And so that will be September 27th at around 4:30 PM, we'll be putting out additional information about that. And I will end it there, if you have any questions.
Board reports. Any, first, any questions for Don? I didn't see any. Okay, board reports. Any board reports this evening? It was a heartbreaking loss, the football game last.
Oh.
The team came so close to beating Danville, which would have been a tremendous achievement for our football team. But the band sounded really good.
Yes, contras.
All right, no other board reports, motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Moved in second at all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motions carried, were adjourned.